Good evening, everybody. My name is Catherine Goodfellow and I am the Town Moderator. I have been spending a few months speaking to somebody who knows how to do this job, so I hope I will do a good job tonight. A quorum being present, this special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on May 13th, 2019. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws and the warrant was posted by Constable James Bowles on May 14th, 2019. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. The moderator and the clerk have appointed the following tellers for this meeting. On the left side, we have Lorraine Carboni; on the right side, Kevin Callaher; on front and center, we have Paul Malidi; and rear center, Kim Borch. All have been sworn in by the Town Clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts laws, the town's general bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. The town of Lakeville relies on the volume town meeting time as the standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings. We will continue this precedent. There are two microphones positioned by the stage to the left and the right. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized, please state your name and address. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing and, after stating your motion, present it to the moderator. We generally do not limit how long you may speak, but please keep comments brief and focused within the article's scope. I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving. We ask that speakers only approach the microphone if they have something new or pertinent to add to what has already been said. Please be respectful and do not make your comments personal. Shouting, booing, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in an unacceptable way will be escorted out and may not return. Do not lose your vote. By precedent, the maker of the motion will have the first opportunity to speak after the motion has been seconded. Following the motion-maker's response, I will solicit the Finance Committee's recommendation and any other committee that is relevant to the article. Then, any registered voter is welcome to speak to the article. When discussion is finished, we vote. If you have a point of order, you may stand and loudly state this from your seat. To clarify, points of order are limited to whether the speaker has the right to the floor or whether the speaker is saying or proposing something irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure. Calling the question ends discussion or debate. Attempts to call the question before discussion as a tactical move to prevent debate will not be accepted by the moderator. If you would like to call the question, you must go to the microphone and only call the question. In other words, you may not discuss or speak the motion and then call the question. When a motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up, in this particular case, your yellow or your pink-colored voting card that you received when you checked in. Do not lose the card. They cannot be replaced. During voting, please keep your card raised until I ask you to lower it. If I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your card. However, if we need to have a counted vote, I will ask you to keep your card raised and we will count. The use of voting cards assure that only the votes of eligible voters are counted. For consistency, we will always vote with the cards. Your voting card has a yes and a no printed on it. This is only if we need to go to a ballot vote. It's unlikely, but we have it just in case. Motions to reconsider or rescind can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had that information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because a lot of people have left. And a motion to reconsider requires a two-thirds vote and can only be made once. Upon a quiet administration request that we only drink water, no eating in the auditorium out of respect for food allergies, please let us respect their space. We ask that cell phones be turned on silent mode. Lake Cam is recording this meeting and will make it available online at vimeo.com/lakecam. I would like just to take one minute to acknowledge and thank Rita Garbet, who has served our town for 19 years. Ms. Garbet?
At this time, we traditionally recognize those members of the community who have served our town in public office who have passed away since the last town meeting. Please stand and offer a moment of silence for Eleanor Gamache, who served our town as a polling worker. Please remain standing after the moment of silence to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I would like to introduce members of the town seated upon the stage. We have Lillian Drain, who is Town Clerk; Rita Garbet, Town Administrator; Greg Corbo, Town Council; Mitzi Hollenbeck, Selectman; Leah Fabian, Selectman; John Powderly, Selectman; George Velopoulos, Finance Committee; Jennifer Cipiora, Finance Committee; Darren Beals, Finance Committee; Catherine DeRocher, Finance Committee; and Todd Hassett, Town Accountant. Does anyone require a copy of the warrant? If you do not have a copy, we can bring one to you. I do not see anyone raising their hands. At this point, I need a... The following non-residents have either requested to speak or may be asked to speak tonight: Erin Polansky and Greg Corbo. I need a motion and a second from a member of our community to allow them to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now that everyone has a copy of the warrant, I seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Article 1.
Article 1. I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $513 and transfer the funds from the street lighting expense account for the payment of a bill for Middleborough Gas &amp; Electric for a prior fiscal year.
Would you care to speak to it?
Yeah, just this is like a housekeeping item. It's a bill unpaid from 2018.
Can everyone hear her speak? No. Is your microphone on?
Yep. This is a 2018 Middleborough Gas &amp; Electric unpaid bill in the amount of $513, pretty much just a housekeeping item.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Can I put them down? All those opposed? The motion moves unanimously. Article 2.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds certain sums of money in order to defray unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2019 for various accounts in the general fund as set forth on page 6 of the warrant.
I need a second. Would you care to speak to it?
I would. So, you've received in your packet, there's a list of transfers. This happens at the end of each year. This is kind of the end-of-the-year accounting housekeeping article whereby when we have additional funds in certain accounts, we move them to cover other accounts and deficits in other accounts. So, what you have this year is a reserve fund transfer of $84,200. We have out-of-district tuitions at Bristol-Aggy where we ended up having fewer students than anticipated going to Bristol-Aggy in the amount of $93,000. We have a couple items from the Highway Department, expenses, $2,122, and an additional expense of $4,000. That's where the money is coming from that was unexpended. Typically, what happens, the reserve fund is we will transfer into snow and ice deficit in the existing fiscal year, so we're transferring in $16,892, $91,795 to cover snow and ice salaries and expenses. We have debt service, so $11,734 on the bond anticipation note for the police station that we've been borrowing before we go out to bond. We have legal fees in the amount of $43,000. We have cable advisory legal fees for $3,579. We have unemployment expense for $10,200, and then capital projects transferred from the highway expenses for $2,122 and $4,000.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Oh, thank you. Now, is there any discussion? Okay, we can go to a vote. All those... This requires a majority vote, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All those opposed? The motion moves unanimously. Thank you. Article 3.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the reserve fund the sum of $162,000 to pay costs of capital improvements and all costs incidental and related thereto as follows: equipment replacements and licensing for the Information Technology Department, $55,000; a copier for the Board of Selectmen, and a plotter-scanner for the Inspection Services Department, $17,000; stormwater management consulting services for the Highway Department, $90,000, for a total of $162,000.
A second? A second? Would you care to speak to it?
I would. So, this is again another housekeeping article whereby we are transferring the remaining funds from the reserve account, which, as you may or may not be aware, typically we put about $200,000 or $250,000 into the reserve account within our budget to cover typically our snow and ice expenses. Fortunately, this year, we had very little in the way of snow and ice expenses, so we're able to use some of the transfers from the reserve fund for some of the capital projects that otherwise we wouldn't have been able to fund in this year. So, that's what the transfers are really going to, and you have them in front of you.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Can I put them down? All those opposed? The motion moves unanimously. Article 4.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Second.
I don't think we need to get the recommendation of the Finance Committee on this one, right? Would you like to speak to it?
Sure. So, this article was originally designed or put on the warrant just as a placeholder in the event that we had an issue with the FCC related to transfers coming in for our Lake Cam whereby we're still not sure what the state is doing with this or whether or not we needed this, so therefore, we're voting to postpone the matter indefinitely.
Would anyone like to discuss? All those in favor of postponing this matter indefinitely, please raise your cards. Can I put them down? Any opposed? Moves unanimously. Article 5.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the zoning bylaw amendments regarding marijuana as shown in the warrant for Article 5.
Second.
Would you care to speak to it?
I would. So, this particular article has been brought to you by a number of different processes. So, we really started out, as you know, the town voted in marijuana zoning at the last town meeting, the annual town meeting. At this point in time, what happened was that in January of, really December of 2018, January 2019, the Department of Public Health, which runs the medical marijuana program for the state, was absorbed into the Cannabis Control Commission, which is the body at the state level that runs and authorizes and permits and licenses adult-use marijuana establishments within the state of Massachusetts. So, what happened is that the Department of Public Health no longer exists as a separate body, and those rules and regulations that our bylaws on medical marijuana pointed to were lifted and put into the adult-use bylaws. So, therefore, our bylaws are no longer necessarily relevant. A couple other things, when we looked at what our bylaws did for medical permitting versus adult-use permitting, we had two different avenues whereby we would have individuals who were looking for a medical permit would have to go through the Zoning Board of Appeals as the special permit granting authority in the town of Lakeville, and those who were applying for an adult-use permit would have to go through the Planning Board. So, if you are a co-located marijuana company, which means you have both medical and adult use located in the same facility, you would have to repeat the process during the entire process with both the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. So, what happened is that the Planning Board held their required public meetings on May 9th, 2019. They voted to recommend approval, but the vote was actually two abstentions, two yes votes, and one no vote. So, in conversations with the Planning Board and talking to the Planning Board, this is something where I think, you know, from a town perspective and why we're putting it in front of you is that it could go either way with having this moved forward so that the special permit granting authority would be held with the Zoning Board of Appeals as opposed to with the Planning Board, and that's really what we're kind of here to discuss tonight.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
What is the recommendation of the Planning Board?
By and whole, Planning Board. The Planning Board is a little... We have some questions because the Planning Board would rather it go to the Zoning Board of Appeals or anybody else really because it's kind of a pain in the neck, all in all. I'm just trying to be honest. However, the Planning Board typically votes and presents rules and regulations for the town, and we follow those rules and regulations when we present them as bylaws or, you know, rules and regulations for the Planning Board. Typically, the Zoning Board of Appeals takes suggestions, requests from people in town that would like to circumvent the rules and regulations of the Planning Board or would Not circumvent, but they would like relief from the rules and regulations and to get whatever they need through. And I think, and I believe the Planning Board is with me, that when we present rules and regulations, we like to hold people to the rules and regulations. And when the Zoning Board of Appeals gets a hold of it, people come to them and they say, "We'd like to do this. We understand what your rules and regulations are, and we would like to do something that is different than the rules and regulations." Personally, I'd like to see this taken up from the Planning Board, taken from the Planning Board, give it to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and let them go with it. However, the Planning Board is basically tasked with the town infrastructure, what the town needs to do as far as traffic, congestion, and so on and so forth, and that's what we try to do. I've seen a lot of comments through the town, through social media, and all of, you know, different online comments saying that the town is going to take this away from the Planning Board to present it to a board or to put it in the realm of a board who is more comfortable with allowing this to go through, meaning the recreational marijuana and the marijuana facilities, which is fine by me. But they're saying that the Planning Board is not... We're not in favor of the marijuana. It's not the marijuana that we're in favor of or not in favor of. The Planning Board is in favor of making sure that the neighborhoods, the areas that are being subjected to the traffic that is going to come from this, to be regulated. And that's what our concern is. Our concern isn't whether there's marijuana or not. I mean, that's regardless of what we want to do. However, whatever the townspeople want to do is fine by me. When we had approved or when we had recommended zoning for this, which was whether it should go in residential, whether it should go in business, whether it should go in industrial, we didn't really have a horse in the race. What we did suggest was that the town present a possible moratorium on the marijuana being put in an industrial place, in an industrial-zoned area, business or residential, for a period of time where we could iron it out because it was pretty much thrust on us. It was very quick what we had to do to try to get into this. And so, what we did was we presented to the town, "You could do it this way, you could do it that way," and they chose to do it the way we did it. So, what we're trying to do is handle it now, and it's kind of a little difficult right now because, granted, I understand that there's a moratorium or a freeze on the facilities going in place. However, I think the regulation of it should be on working with the neighborhoods that are going to be receiving the facilities and how it's going to be regulated. I don't think it should just be an open rush of people going to these facilities.
In the interest of continuing the meeting, sir, does the Planning Board have a recommendation? I'm unclear.
You have our vote.
So, the Planning Board votes approval.
I don't believe it was approval.
Yes.
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 Yes, it was.
Let's see. The Planning Board held required public hearing on May 9th, 2019, and they voted to recommend approval. Is that true?
Yes, so we voted approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion or response?
So, this all sort of happened before I was actually on the board, and, you know, I know I can't use the excuse that I'm new for a long time, but I still am certainly new to the board, and I would just caution people in either direction because, I mean, I'm not sure it was approved, but it's definitely a split vote, so, you know, if you have questions, I would certainly ask folks, you know. I don't necessarily think streamlining is the only reason to, you know, to do this, but if you have questions, please come forward because I know I had a lot and I was actually at some of these meetings, so.
Thank you. Mr. Powderly?
Yes, through the moderator. I guess the long and short of it is, the Planning Board usually did site plan approval, which was, not to make it simplistic, but it was light, water, parking, traffic. This got changed to site plan approval versus review, and it was done because we had thought years ago that most companies would get a medical permit first through the Zoning Board, a time would lapse, this is before the laws are all written, and then come to adult use, which would be the Planning Board. I went to probably all of the Planning Board meetings, and I think they put their best foot forward, but the buildings had been built, the equipment was installed. Basically, it was a total, complete business ready for planting, and I think that all special permits belong with the Zoning Board as we do it now for all other businesses, and I don't think that this is any different. There'll be five more companies coming, possibly for the adult use. So, we have six agreements, or six host community agreements, one of which has gone through the process. There's potentially five more that may go through the process of recreational use. This is just... The business is already in existence. This is talking about the site plan, not necessarily the inside workings of the business. And certainly, the traffic issues, not to belittle it, but there's been 16 facilities that have opened. Certainly, the first couple up in the North Hampton area, it was certainly chaos, and whether it be the Planning Board or whether it be the Zoning Board or whether it be the Board of Selectmen or the Police Department, making sure that the traffic is properly controlled when these facilities open. All of the traffic problems that I know of lasted two or three weeks and kind of went away. There's only 16 companies that have been approved so far. I think there's 400 applications that are before the Cannabis Commission, and I couldn't begin to tell you when ours, when ours, meaning the companies in the town, would go for... be ready to open. I mean, it's months and months away, except for maybe one that's months away, but the others could be a year away. And perhaps the novelty and the traffic problems would be somewhat mitigated, but they'll be handled anyways prior to opening. The owners don't want to have traffic problems either, so I'm sure that they work in with the town groups, whether it be the Police Department for added details and trying to get off-street parking, whether they do appointments or whatever, I think that they'll handle it. But I believe that all, not just marijuana, but I believe that these special permits belong with the Zoning Board now as they are currently. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Leszek Zinkowicz, 6 Anaconda Drive. I happen to be on the Planning Board, but I'm just speaking for myself. I'm getting older now, and now the topics that were... We're going from South Coast... And now the topics that were, we're going from South Coast Rail to recreational marijuana to Indian casinos. I mean, stuff like, we were supposed to just be taking farms, chopping them up into building lots and selling them for, you know, three-bedroom houses. This is, but we wound up with this. The problem we had with it was that it was already, it was already, as John said, almost built. The time to get a permit is not after you build something. You're supposed to get the permit before you build something. Now, that certainly wasn't our fault. It wasn't John's fault. It wasn't anybody's fault. It was just the way the state did it. You can talk about, it's a lot easier to plan things before they're built. And that's what we do on everything else. This particular, we happened to do one. We had the help of John coming to all the meetings. And take that for what it's. But the people, this particular group just wasn't very good at filling out paperwork. I mean, they just, any 10th grader that did, you know, anybody that went through the MCAS procedure would have been better at filling out the paperwork than these people were. And we just, considering they were the first one, we had to sort of make an example of how the first one is supposed to be done. And that it had to be done thoroughly and well. And I think the impression that we gave to people was that we were real picky. We weren't picky. We were really, really easy. Every English teacher in here, we were really easy on them. They just couldn't do paperwork. And that's, besides that, I agree with Brian. Thank you.
So just to add to one of the comments that Zink made. So one of the issues that we have too with the existing bylaws is related to at the state level, the timing of the provisional license, which is issued from the state. There's a provisional license and then there's a final license. So they need to issue essentially a provisional license prior to the planning board even being able to kind of move this forward in their permitting process. So what you do is you end up with a situation where you're kind of going with a hypothetical at the state level before it even gets to the ability to be debated by the local town. And so this will change that to not require a provisional license from the state level prior to applying for a special permit at the local level. We want to make sure that this is actually allowing for the town of Lakeville to have input prior to going to the state with a plan that is allowing them to have a provisional license.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I see someone coming. Yes, sir.
Mark Bossay from 22 Johnson Drive. A little confused, so I'm going to ask a question, see if I can sum this up pretty well. The planning board, up until now, has been doing the research and reorganization and looking at pluses and minuses on how things should go. And then they make their recommendations. Along the way, we get this zoning board of appeals that was formed with specific members and their friends to streamline the process. And it seems to be specifically to streamline the process for these marijuana facilities. Is that a pretty good summation of where we're at right now? We're basically trying to pass on from planning board to this zoning board to streamline the process for these marijuana facilities? Because it sounds like they were doing a lot of stuff to kind of figure out right, wrong, or otherwise. But now if they get to the zoning board, we're just going to go, yeah, we like that. We're going to get it through. Please comment.
Yes, so.
Okay.
Is that the way I can do it?
You may. You're asking a question. And I'm going to ask who will answer. So Ms. Holbeck, you have the floor.
Yeah, so just to explain. So what happened in Massachusetts with medical marijuana laws, and I'm not going to go into a lot of history because I want to keep it relevant to the topic. But the topic is that in 2012, Massachusetts approved adult use or medical, sorry, medical use marijuana at a state level. At that point in time, we created bylaws here in Lakeville that allowed for the zoning board of appeals to be the special permit granting authority. So they've had more experience with this because that was what town meeting voted at the time. So what happened was that that was exact. So the zoning board of appeals has had this longer than the planning board in terms of the special permit granting authority and experience with marijuana companies.
So then.
Respectfully, please speak through the moderator. Thank you.
How do I do that?
You just look at me. It doesn't feel like it's too personal.
Through the moderator, I'd like to also answer some of his questions.
Okay, Mr. Powerly.
It's absolutely not to throw back to the zoning board after the fact to streamline it for marijuana. It should be streamlined anyways. This is a very unusual thing. It's the only special permit that is not under the purview of the zoning board today. We broke it up because we thought that there would be a longer process between the medical and the recreational because one was approved way back in 2012. So that, to my knowledge, it is the only one that is broken out. So it isn't to streamline it because it's marijuana and marijuana is a tainted business. To me, it's simply, it belongs at the zoning board and they should look at the lighting, the water runoff, the parking, the traffic. Prior to approval, we'd be better off getting those questions answered in the beginning, not after the fact. So to me, it should be all addressed in the beginning, not after the business has been somewhat approved and be questioned at a later date. All of those issues should be upfront and approved. Thank you.
Did you have one further comment?
Yes, I'm asking a question. I should direct it to you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the zoning board that was created then, in my words, to streamline the process, is the zoning board decision or coming to their decision, is that open to town meeting? Is that open to zoning board meeting? Is that open to questions, discussions? Or is the zoning board strictly going to be allowed to streamline that stuff through? Can the townspeople, the taxpayers, have their opportunity to debate, discuss, or figure out whether it's a good idea?
Through you, Madam Moderator, may I address this? Thank you. So I guess I'd just like to make something clear. The zoning board was not created to address marijuana. The zoning board is a creature of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, and is a board of the town. And there's one in every town that is constituted to address zoning issues. When we talk in the context of marijuana about streamlining, the issue is that one type of marijuana establishment, a medical establishment, has to go to the planning board to get a special permit. Whereas a different type of marijuana establishment, a recreational, has to go to the zoning board or vice versa. But so the point is, is that you have these similar businesses that operate under an umbrella in state law. They should only have to go to one board at the town level. And the recommendation is that that be the zoning board. Now, the zoning board is a board like any other. It's subject to the open meeting law. It has to meet in public. They have to deliberate as a board. They have to take public votes. Abutters need to be notified of things and their decisions are subject to legal challenge. So this isn't some type of subterfuge to get marijuana treated differently than other types of uses. It's simply a mechanism to get two similar types of businesses subject to the same process.
Who does the zoning board?
I get a turn.
You do, yes. Yes, no, so he's been at the microphone waiting for a minute. So we're going to go to him and then we can go back to you if there's no one else.
And I'm still in answering mode. Back from the original question that you had. And I just wanted to give a different answer than you were getting from the diet. The, in 2014, when medical, I think that year, when medical marijuana first came around, this was our motion, a motion from the planning board that went to pass that. Just about everybody or an awful lot of people were for having medical marijuana. People spoke very well about it at the time and there wasn't a lot of opposition. The reason it went to, that special permit went to the zoning board of appeals is because we, the planning board, put it to them because we didn't want to do it. And we, that was the motion that came forward. It went to town meeting and it passed. And it left it that way. We still, site plan review. We still do site plan review for all of the marijuana facilities or any building in town. Doesn't make any difference what they put inside it. The site plan review is just the same as it was before. All those steps like parking and stuff like that still has to be done through the planning board. What they do inside the building, we never ever look. We're not supposed to. It's 6C, I think, or it's state law. We're not supposed to notice that. As far as other special permits, we also do special permits for large-scale energy stuff. Like if we had a wind farm, that's our special, that's the planning board's special permit. If we have those solar things, the solar fields, that's our special permit. I think there may be some sort of antennas that we also do. But it's not, they don't do the special permits because it belongs there. It just happens that most of the special permits are involved with undersized lots, residential lots. I mean, that's 95% of their work and they do it well. And no one wants it. And, you know, they do it and they do it well.
Understood. Last question.
Say it for me.
Last question. On this, just to be clear for me, I don't know anybody else. The zoning board answers to who? And are they responsible to the taxpayers, yes or no?
Could you say? Mr. Corbo.
So the members of the zoning board of appeals, through you, Madam Moderator, are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And so they are subject to the will of the voters just like any other board or officer that's appointed. If you're not satisfied with the appointments that are being made, you can go to the appointing authority with a complaint. And the appointing authority can make a different decision or you can vote differently as to the appointing authority next time around.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo.
Sounds like a closed group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I see someone coming up. Would you please state your name and address?
Hi, Laurie Verica, 6 Dunham Road. So probably, you know, I'm not as involved as I should be. But are we talking specifically about the location on Rhode Island Road or a different location or any location this is for all?
This is specifically addressing the language, not a particular location.
Okay, so that will be voted on later?
That's not.
Are we not doing for that? I thought this was more, well, like I said, sorry, I don't, I guess I was misinformed, but I thought it was about that location in particular that I've been hearing in the neighborhood.
Strictly changing the language. Mr. Corbo, would you please answer?
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. No, so this is a zoning bylaw change that relates only to the procedure for issuance of these permits. It does not relate to any specific property or permit. That's not something that comes in front of town meeting. That's something that's either going to go in front of the planning board or the zoning board, depending on what the vote is here tonight.
And when it goes in front of those boards, do the town taxpayers get to vote on that? On where the locations get approved?
The townspeople don't get to vote, but certainly you can participate in the proceedings. They're public hearings and your input can be taken. But they're subject to a vote of the boards.
Okay. So the surrounding neighbors, really doesn't matter if you want it or not?
This is just with the language of the.
No, I'm talking about the zoning board for the future. So the zoning board that you have, when they go to them for a permit, the zoning board will pass it or not pass it. And the neighbors can voice it, but it doesn't really matter that much? Doesn't seem like.
Mr. Corbo.
I don't know, I'm just trying to figure it out. I'm not for it, so I'm sorry, but.
It's not a question that can be answered. It has to go in front of the zoning board of appeals. There is an opportunity for abutters and other residents to participate in that process. And it's up to them to decide how to weigh the comments that they receive, either for or against a particular application.
And would they get notification?
They're publicly.
Yes, there's public notice.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Robert Blowett, 1 Johnson Drive. Not so much a question about this. I just want to, I guess it is a question in my mind. I just want to ensure this is only a means of eliminating a step because of a new business, a single business operating in two different aspects of marijuana, one being medical, one being recreational. And in the case of a single business operating both those at the same location, they would have to go through two separate processes in order to get permission. To me, that seems to be the case and why we are changing the bylaws here and who's responsible for what. Honestly, I don't have an issue with marijuana. I don't have an issue with it being, it's already approved. We've got it. We're not getting rid of it. It's going to be here. And as far as these changes go, because I was confused at first and I misunderstood a lot about what was going on. This, to me, is not a drastic change. It's not a dramatic change. It's not shortchanging us. What is shortchanging us is not showing up. Is not being a part of, not being a part of the discussion, not being at the meetings, not listening, not asking the questions until we get to a point where there's a lot of confusion. And we all come in here and we just don't understand because this whole process, this whole legalization process has been one big confusing process from the state down. And I think a lot of the confusion does come from the state because they've made it difficult for the towns to actually enact in a responsible manner because the regulations have changed and shifted and what is medical, what is recreational? Can they be together? Can they not be together? Who gets to decide? What, I mean, they change the state agency. So, yeah, it's caused a lot of confusion. And I understand from my point of view that I was totally, you know, thrown back by some things that happened and was definitely confused. But I understand why we're doing this. And honestly, I really don't see the issue, an issue with it being streamlined. We're just eliminating one step for someone who has to come in and get permission. So they don't have to go asking for permission from two separate organizations. They still have to ask permission from the town. And the town, we are the town. We get to decide what we want and how we, how much of it we're willing to accept. And we do that through all the open meetings and whether it's a selectmen meeting, a zoning meeting, planning board meeting. And I just would really, really ask that my neighbors get involved. And because otherwise, complaining about it after the fact, you know, it does nobody any good. So that's all my input for tonight.
Thank you, sir. I don't think we need a response to that. No. Mr. Markson.
Ms. Moderator, I call the question.
I need a second? All those in favor? Any opposed to calling the question? I will now go to a vote. This is a two-thirds vote. I will ask all of our tellers to please count this vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Please keep them up until you are counted.
14.
30.
18.
Thank you. Okay. All those opposed? Please raise your cards.
2.
13.
4.
9.
The motion passes. And this is it? So we've come to the end of our business for our special town meeting. Do I hear a motion to dissolve the special?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. I'll now move right into the, the regular town meeting. I have a few housekeeping issues for those who, who arrived after. A quorum being present, this town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on April 29th, 2019. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws. And the warrant was posted by Constable James Bowles on May 14th, 2019. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. The moderator and the town clerk have appointed the following tellers. They are the same. We have Lorraine Carboni on the left, Kevin Kelleher on the right, Paul Malidi, center front and stage, and Kim Borje, rear center. All have been sworn by the town clerk. To repeat, we will be running this meeting in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, the town's general bylaws, and by precedent of other town meetings, we will continue to use town meeting time. The microphones remain where they were. We do not limit how long you may speak, although we wish that you will keep your comments brief and focused on the article in question. Please be respectful. By precedent, again, for those who just came in, the maker of the motion will have the first opportunity to speak. After the motion has been seconded, following the motion maker's commentary, I will solicit the Finance Committee's recommendation and any other pertinent committee. And then anyone else may speak to the, the motion. For this meeting, we have yellow voting cards. Only people who have the yellow voting card may vote in the meeting. When we go to a vote, please raise your card. Keep it held up until I tell you to put them down. I think everything else stays the same. On our stage, everyone remains the same, but I will reintroduce everyone for those members of our group who have come in later. We have Lillian Drain, Town Clerk, Rita Garbit, Town Administrator, Greg Corbo, Town Council, Mitzi Hollenbeck, Selectman, Leah Fabian, Selectman, John Powderly, Selectman, George Velopolis, Finance Committee, Jennifer Cipiora, Finance Committee, Darren Beals, Finance Committee, Catherine Derosier, Finance Committee, and Todd Hasset, Town Accountant. Does anyone require a copy of the warrant for the regular town meeting? If you do, please raise your hand. We'll get you one. Oh, we see one person over there. Does anyone else need one? I'm squinting. Okay. So I'll just wait till that one person gets there. All right. The following non-residents have either requested to speak or may be asked to speak tonight. We have Aaron Polansky and Greg Corbo. I need a motion and a second from a member of our community to allow them to speak.
No move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize. We have one other person who we need, so we need to reopen that. I need a motion to allow Franklin Moniz, who is the Superintendent of Schools, to speak. Oh, Superintendent of Streets. I thought you said Superintendent of Streets to speak. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Now that everyone has a copy of the warrant, I seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Put them down. Any opposed? Okay. So we may now move to Article 1.
Miss Moderator, I move that the town vote to determine the salaries of all elected officers and to raise and appropriate $29,524,938, transfer $5,415 from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Trust, transfer $25,000 from the sale of land proceeds on 613 acres of Howland Road, and transfer $183,655 from free cash to defray town expenses for the fiscal period July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020 inclusive. Said sums to be allocated in accordance with the handout entitled Town of Lakeville Fiscal Year 2020 Budget.
I need a second. Okay. At this point, I believe I am supposed to read all of the pieces. I'm sorry, the blue lines. Yes, okay. Yes, yes. So what we're going to try and do is go through this entire list. And if you would like to put a hold on one item on the list, just shout out "hold." Make it very loud and clear. And then we will go back to that item at the end of the reading of the list. So, 1. Selectmen: Elected Officials' Compensation, $13,995. 2. Selectmen Personnel, $431,350. 3. Selectmen Expenses, $54,000. 4. Selectmen Expenses, $900. 5. Reserve Fund, $200,000. 6. Accounting Personnel, $55,681. 7. Accounting Expenses, $81,725. 8. Assessors: Elected Officials' Compensation, $5,000. 9. Assessors' Personnel, $8,595. 10. Assessors' Expenses, $109,750. 11. Treasurer/Collector: Elected Official Compensation, $80,156. 12. Treasurer/Collector: Personnel, $134,117. 13. Treasurer/Collector: Expenses, $53,251. 14. Legal Services Expenses, $60,000. 15. Personnel Board Expenses, $800. 16. Information Technology Personnel, $97,500. 17. Information Technology Expenses, $258,500. 18. Town Clerk: Elected Official Compensation, $70,858. 19. Town Clerk Personnel, $56,270. 20. Town Clerk Expenses, $8,350. 21. Elections Expenses, $24,500. 22. Registration Expenses, $13,700. 23. Conservation Commission Personnel, $28,820. 24. Conservation Commission Expenses, $3,100. 25. Planning Board Expenses, $300. 26. Appeals Board Expenses, $300. 27. Historic Townhouse Expenses, $4,500. 28. Town Offices Fire Station Expenses, $123,000. 29. Facilities Management Personnel, $91,796. 30. Facilities Management Expenses, $1,000, nope, $50,000. 31. Town Reports Expenses, $800. 32. Cable TV Advisory Committee Expenses, $12,000. 33. Other General Government Expenses, $11,002. 34. Police Personnel, $1,679,973. 35. Police Expenses, $205,550. 36. Communications Personnel, $298,697. 37. Fire Personnel, $1,289,206. 38. Fire Expenses, $123,025. 39. Building Inspection Personnel, $246,870. 40. Building Inspection Expenses, $3,600. 41. Part-Time Inspectors' Expenses, $64,300. 42. Emergency Management Personnel, $2,500. 43. Emergency Management Expenses, $5,480. 44. Animal Control Personnel, $92,246. 45. Animal Control Expenses, $20,046. Special School Committee stipends, sorry, School Committee stipends, $6,500. 47. Total Freetown Lakeville RSD, $14,000. 14 million 781,769. That's a big one. 48. Old Colony, $1,960,970. 49. Bristol Agricultural Tuition, $350,655. 50. Highway Personnel, $590,641. 51. Highway Expenses, $228,350. 52. Snow and Ice Personnel, $17,740. 53. Snow and Ice Expenses, $38,575. 54. Street Lighting Expenses, $21, $25,000. 55. Cemetery's Expenses, $13,000. 56. Board of Health: Elected Officials' Compensation, $5,000. 57. Board of Health Personnel, $93,344. 58. Board of Health Expenses, $10,550. 59. Board of Health Visiting Nurse Expenses, $4,000. 60. Counsel on Aging Personnel, $184,540. 61. Counsel on Aging Expenses, $30,000. 62. Veteran Services Personnel, $18,471. 63. Veterans Expenses, Veteran Services, Veterans Services Expenses, $184,555. 64. Library Personnel, $262,560. 65. Library Expenses, $109,135. 66, this is 66, the Historic Library? What is this? Historic Library? Historic Library, $4,000. 67. The Historical Commission, $500. 68. Total Debt Service, $1,338,402. 69. Plymouth County Extension Co-op, $500. 70. Regional Planning Assessment, $1,986. 71. Plymouth County CRS Assessment, $1,031,78. 72. Unemployment Expenses, $1,000. 73. Total Group Insurance, $2 million? 74. Total General Insurance, $206,000. I heard no holds. That was a very long list. Okay. Would care to speak to this?
I guess I would. So this is our annual operating budget for the Town of Lakeville. The majority of the funding comes through taxation, which is through our, our tax levy limit that we raised, which is pretty much 99.9% of this. A remaining amount of free cash, about $183,000, which really is left over after we had unexpended budgets, other one-time monies that were unanticipated through last year's fiscal year budget that we didn't already transfer into some capital project stabilization accounts, things like that. To just give an idea of the financial health of the town based upon this budget and where we are and where we're going with it, we have a little over $2 million in stabilization accounts and capital projects accounts. That will, you'll, you'll see in Article 5, we'll move forward to how we're funding some of the capital items this year. This is after those capital items have been funded. We have about a little over $2 million in those stabilization accounts. We also have very little debt service payments that are not either otherwise funded through a debt exclusion, which we'll talk about in Article 7 and Article 8 tonight as well. I'll give a little more background on that. But from the most part, the town has very little debt expended that's really outstanding right now. It also has additional funds and stabilization. We found ourselves in a pretty solid financial position right now to deal with some of the issues that we have going forward. So this budget, the main components of it, we include about 60%, 65% in educational costs. We have the funding for the Old Colony District, which went up a little bit this year, about almost $140,000. We have the increase on the regional district Freetown Lakeville, which is an increase of about $640,000 this year. All of that has been funded through the existing budget and we have a balanced budget.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Rodney Dixon, 39 Bakeland. Just a quick question about the format of the budget. When we presented the budget, we have the fiscal 19, fiscal 20 projected, but there's no variance. So when we walk into this meeting, we have very little time to look at these. Now, the, the layperson will look at it and they're going to have to calculate the dollar difference. Why is the variance not on the budget?
Would care to respond to that, Selectman?
Either whole dollar or percentage or both. Bueller.
Can someone ask Todd?
Mr. Powder, oh, we have.
Yeah, I'll, I'll attempt to answer that a little bit. Is that building the budget during those budget meetings, all of those variances were established and discussed? I could certainly tell you what department by department they might be, but it's really going to the budget meeting, which is this, this budget book where all those variances were discussed in detail.
I'm talking more for the.
Maybe Todd can answer. If, if you want a different presentation, perhaps moving forward for a different meeting.
So, so I would like to address that. Yeah, absolutely. Moving forward, I, I come to these meetings, I look at, I'm in the finance world. And I just think, again, for the townsfolk, it would be much easier to see those variances. That's all I'm saying, the format that's been given as the handout. You know, when we're sitting here looking at it, we're trying to rifle through, well, what's the increase? You know, is there variance, positive, negative? And then there's no notations, why? So if we have a, you know, a significant variance, why do we have that variance? Just a simple note, whether it's inflation or, you know, we had none, whatever. But I'm just talking to the folks in the audience. So when we get these, folks like myself can, I can read it. I can understand it very well. But those that are, that are not, you know, in the business, it might be a little bit easier to look at it and say, oh, yeah. Well, hey, there's an X amount of, you know, dollar increase. Well, why? Well, why? That's all I'm asking, and obviously not for this one, but moving forward in the future, can, can the select, can the selectmen, whoever creates this budget, create it in that format for the, the meetings moving forward?
Ms. Hollenbeck.
So, a couple of things that we've done in the past, too, which unfortunately, I, I hate to always say that we don't have a lot of attendance on it, but we put together a budget presentation, we met on a Saturday, we went through, and we had the, the temporary, essentially not the temporary budget, but the preliminary final budget. And we went through it, we kind of, you know, talked to people about what the differences were, really exactly what you're asking for. I think unfortunately, what's happened over time is that we have very little participation by the public in our meetings. So if it's something that you're really looking for, you know, I would suggest that you just reach out to the town administrator and we can get you that information. We can also, you know, talk about that, you know, from your concerns in terms of how you're seeing this presented. I think that that's something that, you know, as long as there's no law that's preventing us from doing that in the presentation of the budget, I don't see why we couldn't do that. You know, with this budget, too, we really didn't have a balanced budget up until maybe about three, four weeks ago, there were a lot of things in flux, mainly the school department. We were working with the school committee, the regional finance subcommittee, and trying to get to a number that we could vote on between the schools and the town. So, you know, things are always constantly moving, but there's no reason why with some of the main department budgets, and that's how we're presented with them, and again, you know, this whole process that takes, you know, months to kind of get through to get to that budget. But I think that, you know, your, your point's absolutely valid, and thanks for your input, and that, and thank you for serving the town, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carl, first, twenty-nine, Hill Street. Yeah, just to emphasize that last comment you made, I think, going forward, yes, it should be on the, on the list anyway, having the variance for the sake of transparency, and it, it is only a line item on an Excel spreadsheet, so it is very simple, simple for it to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the budget, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed? The budget passes unanimously. One moment. So we have another non-resident who has requested to speak tonight. Conrad Ledger from Beta. So I need a motion from the floor to allow him to speak in a second.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now on to Article Two.
I move that the town-- I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars for the Park Department Enterprise Fund as follows. Thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars to be raised from Park Department retained earnings, and two hundred sixty thousand five hundred dollars to be raised from estimated Park Department receipts. Said sums to be allocated between salaries and expenses of the Park Department for the fiscal period July first, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, inclusive as indicated in the finance committee report.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to it?
Actually, I'll defer to Mitzi, if she doesn't mind.
Okay. Ms. Hollenbeck. So this is the annual operating budget for the enterprise fund, this is the Park Enterprise Fund, I have to look to make sure I've got the right one. Typically, what happens in an enterprise fund is it's typically funded through user face, and that's kind of the definition of an enterprise fund. So in here, you'll see that it's a balanced budget, it includes a use, I believe, of retained earnings for certain areas that they're going to be utilizing. It's thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars, which retained earnings is kind of like their, I don't even know what you want to call it, it's not their stabilization fund, but essentially it's their stabilization fund. So what they're presenting in this budget is that they have a balanced budget, but utilizing thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars from previous year's earnings in excess of expenses to cover their current year expenses. What they have in here is they have a number of different things that they're trying to do this year. They are trying to work on the lacrosse fields that you see on Route eighteen, so this is included, some portion of it is included in here in this budget, and I think that's pretty much, I don't think there's anyone from the Parks Department here to speak to the budget, so that's what you're voting on tonight.
And does the finance committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Any other discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed? The motion moves unanimously. Article Three.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred eighty thousand dollars for the landfill enterprise as follows. Ninety thousand dollars to be raised by taxation, and two hundred ninety thousand dollars to be raised from estimated landfill receipts. Said sums to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the landfill for the fiscal period July first, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty, inclusive as indicated in the finance committee report.
Second.
Would you care to speak to it?
Again, I would like to defer to Mitzi, if she can. I came in right in the middle of all the budget stuff, so I, I think she's gonna do a much better job of explaining it than I could.
Ms. Hollenbeck.
So the landfill transfer station is also another enterprise fund, which again, as I just explained, means that this is a fund that's supposed to be able to generate its own revenues to cover its costs. However, the landfill, the landfill enterprise fund has not been able to do so for a number of different years, whether it's dealing with the cost of the stickers, the trash bags, and the usage of the landfill. What has been happening year after year is that the town has decided to supplement the enterprise fund. The ninety thousand dollars that's being raised by taxation is to supplement the enterprise fund, such that your tax dollars are supplementing the landfill. This is something that we've had conversations on at the board level, as to is this a public service that the town wishes to offer? It certainly is something that we will continue to look through, we'll continue to evaluate. We have gone through, we've changed some contracts around, we have tried to reduce the cost as much as possible, and we have a shortfall in the fees that are generated by about ninety thousand dollars.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Any discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed? The motion moves by majority vote. Article Four.
Through the moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to cover the cost of contractual obligations upon retirement of town employees.
Second.
Would you care to speak to it?
Yes, this is somewhat simple math. If, if, if a town employee retires, any accrued vacation time and eligible sick leave buyback will be covered by these funds set aside for this purpose. And we, we happen to have several retirements coming up over the next few years, so we wanna increase this account. Thank you.
What is the recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend approval.
Is there any discussion? I'll go to a vote. All those in favor of Article Four. You may lower your cards. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article Five.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of nine hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred dollars to pay costs of capital improvements and equipment, and all costs incidental and related thereto as follows. Two new police cruisers with equipment, less trade-in, sixty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Seven new ballistic shields and eight new helmets for the police department, twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars. One new four-wheel-drive truck with equipment, less trade-in, for the fire department, thirty-eight thousand dollars. One new fire pumper with a new Jaws of Life in equipment, less trade-ins for the fire department, four hundred seventy thousand dollars. One used cab and chassis with multi-use body, sander and plow, and equipment for the highway department, seventy-five thousand dollars. Two new forty-by-thirty storage sheds with staging for the highway department, seventy-five thousand dollars. One used thirty-eight-foot bucket truck with safety equipment for the highway department, sixty thousand dollars. One new leaf loader, one new riding mower, and one new zero-turn mower for the highway department, twenty-five thousand dollars. Site work and engineer for the beneficial use determination, the bud permit at the highway department, fifty thousand dollars. One new four-wheel-drive truck for the animal control officer, thirty thousand dollars. Paved driveway and parking lot at the animal shelter, twenty thousand dollars. National register listing and preservation plans for the historical commission, ten thousand dollars. Historic and archaeological asset survey for the historical commission, twenty-five thousand dollars. Database software codification for the town clerk, ten thousand dollars, for a total of nine hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred dollars. And to meet this, and that, to meet this appropriation, to transfer from the following available funds. Three hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars shall be transferred from the sale of land proceeds from Howland Road. Two hundred forty thousand one hundred dollars shall be transferred from the sale of property proceeds, two hundred thirty-nine Main Street, the old assessors' building. Thirteen thousand two hundred three dollars and seventy-five cents shall be transferred from the sale of real estate. Forty thousand six dollars and twenty-five cents shall be transferred from the sale of the water tower. One hundred one thousand eight hundred dollars shall be transferred from the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund, for a total of seven hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. And to transfer the following funds from previous town meetings as follows. Fifteen thousand dollars from Article thirteen of the annual town meeting in two thousand twelve, held on June thirteenth, two thousand eleven. Fifteen thousand from Article fourteen, the annual town meeting, two thousand fifteen, held on June ninth, two thousand fourteen. Twelve thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars, Article twelve, annual town meeting, two thousand sixteen, held on June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. One hundred eight thousand nine hundred dollars, Article twelve, annual town meeting, two thousand sixteen, held on June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Seventeen thousand dollars, Article ten, annual town meeting, two thousand sixteen, held on June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Seventeen thousand dollars, Article nineteen, annual town meeting, two thousand seventeen, held on June sixth, two thousand sixteen. Seventeen thousand, Article six, annual town meeting, two thousand eighteen, held on June twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Six hundred sixty-eight dollars, Article five, annual town meeting, two thousand nineteen, held on June fourth, two thousand eighteen, for a sub-total of two hundred three thousand three hundred fifty dollars, and a grand total of nine hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred dollars. And to authorize the board of selectmen and other appropriate town officials to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Would you care to speak to it?
I spoke a lot, just getting there to the end of that article. So this is, so typically what happens is we generally have been spending about seven hundred thousand dollars on capital projects, year by year. And what happened this year is we went to a couple of different funding sources, where a number, the two hundred thirty thousand dollars that we talked about, which is the second amount of transfers, which are articles that were previously authorized by town meeting, and for certain reasons, either we did not spend those funds, there were, there was a notice of intent for a stormwater MS four permit for fifteen thousand dollars, that was the first article, that was not spent. We had some radios for the fire department, we had seal coating at the town office and fire station. Those items were things that were budgeted for, but were never actually spent. The largest majority of those were the police station roof repair, which fortunately, as we know, I think today's supposed to be substantial completion of the police department, the new one, so we certainly don't need to repair the roof on the old police station for that purpose. So that's available for us to be used here as well. Seventeen thousand dollars was a revaluation from the assessors, that happened over three years. We did not need to engage that service, therefore that is available for us as well. So that's the majority of these items. Other than that, we do have two other major items. When we sell land or real estate for certain purposes, the, the proceeds from those purposes can only be used for capital items that have a, a useful life of five years or more. So we're limited in what we can do with some of those funds, and that's why they've been sitting there in some of our stabilization funds, essentially, waiting for us to be able to purchase something that had a five-year life. I can speak further on it, but if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them specifically.
What is the recommendation of the finance committee?
We recommend approval.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes, Bob Marshall from Barstow Street. Mitzi, I didn't catch the number for selling the water tower, could you repeat that?
Yeah, so what's being used from the sale of the water tower is forty thousand six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay, and can you refresh my memory, how much did we sell it for?
So the water tower itself was sold for the debt that was outstanding. So what happened, though, that we didn't know when we were actually going to sell the water tower. So we had about four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, which represented two debt service payments, because it crossed over a fiscal year. So it's really from those two payments for four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, so when you take away that forty thousand dollars, it's roughly just a little bit left that's under four hundred thousand dollars available for further appropriation in a, a separate town meeting, or, or some other--
Okay, and through you, Madam Moderator, do you recall how much we paid for that water tower?
So, through, through the moderator--
You may answer.
Okay. It's kind of not, it's a little bit of background information, but if I recall and go back in time, I believe it's about four point five million that we bought it for.
More or less than I recall.
Right, and so what happened was that there was, you know, when I came on the board, we ended up trying to negotiate the sale of this. We ended up selling it to the city of Taunton, was for the existing debt at that time. So that's not the, the four hundred thirty-five thousand is not the proceeds from the sale, it's really debt service payments that were authorized that were never actually paid on the debt.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other further discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. I'm gonna take a risk. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed? The motion moves, passes unanimously. Don't need to count that. Article Six.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars for the Middleborough Lakeville Herring Fishery Commission for pilot projects to protect the passage of river herring, to include an echo harvester pilot demonstration, a bentic mat test, or other mechanical, chemical, or biological intervention.
I'll second.
Would you care to speak to it?
I would, actually. They give me the easy ones, really. So we, on February twenty-first, we did receive a request from the Middleborough Lakeville Herring Fishery Commission requesting this money. The towns of Lakeville and Middleborough each approved five thousand dollars last year for the purpose of weed eradication, and Middleborough approved their five thousand dollars at their fiscal year twenty annual town meeting, which happened in April, this past April. So this is our, this is our obligation for that five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Any discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article Seven.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to, A, authorize the board of selectmen to acquire easements to undertake the Route seventy-nine Myrick Street Rhode Island Road rehabilitation project as described in Article seven of the warrant. B, transfer the care, custody, and control of a portion or portions of the town-owned property or property shown on the plans described in Article seven of the warrant, from the board or officer having custody of the same, for the purposes for which such properties are currently held to the board of selectmen for public way and utility purposes, and further to dedicate said portions of the town-owned properties to the foregoing purposes. And, if applicable, authorize the board of selectmen to submit petitions to the general court to allow the foregoing under Article ninety-seven of the Massachusetts Constitution or otherwise. C, authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of any excess land located outside the altered layout of Route seventy-nine on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration as the selectmen deem appropriate. D, appropriate the sum of two million three hundred thousand dollars for the purposes described in Article seven of the warrant, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the board of selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, as amended, thereby reducing the amount authorized to-- authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2, the amounts required to pay the principal of an interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote. And E. To authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and take any and all actions as may be necessary to appropriate, or appropriate, to effectuate the purposes set forth in Article 7 of the warrant.
Second. I'm sorry. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to it?
Sure. So, one thing just to note, Article 7 and Article 8, although different, should be somewhat taken in consideration and in contemplation of each other. So between Article 7, which this is an authorization with the Route 79 project, which we've been working with, it's a, it's a state project that Mass. DOT has designated that on their TIP program. Right now, the project itself, to do a complete rehabilitation, regrading all of the drainage issues, solve all those issues, from the state level is about $10 million. Lakeville's contribution to that consists of both engineering fees that we've been paying through money that we have been receiving through the state, which is Chapter 90 money, that we have paid some of those through that money, but also we have easements and land takings and utility easements that we would need to take so that we could widen Route 79 to accommodate the TIP program. What happens at the state level is something that they receive federal funding through their Complete Streets program, which requires things that otherwise you and I probably would not like to see on Route 79, or would think might be a little bit more expensive than what we would be willing to spend ourselves, including sidewalks and widening the road, changing sightlines, things like that. However, to receive the federal money, the state must comply with the Complete Streets program. Therefore, we have hired an engineer, Beta, so we have Conrad Ledger from Beta. He's available to speak to this if you have other further questions about that. We will be holding public hearings on Route 79. That will be happening shortly. We will have a 75% design done at some point in time where those public hearings will allow you to see the next iteration of what's happening at Route 79. Currently includes a roundabout at the intersections of 18 and 79, and also will improve the intersection at Precinct Street and Route 79. So this $2.3 million, just to get back to that, would be what's considered to be a debt exclusion. I say take it in conjunction with Article 8, because in Article 8, we're asking for another $1.7 million to repave other roads within town. The cost to pave a road is pretty substantial, and the state, every year, only gives us about $500,000 if we're lucky through Chapter 90 money, which is really the money that's set aside by the state to be given to the local cities and towns to be able to help pay for the cost of roads. What you'll see on the handout in Article 8 is that the cost of one road could be $500,000. So at this rate, we will never manage to maintain or upkeep our roads. Every year that we do not do those projects, they get considerably worse, and it costs more to be able to repair those. So again, the only reason why I say take that in conjunction with Article 8 is that this is a debt exclusion. What does a debt exclusion actually mean? What it means is if you authorize this to happen, this goes to a ballot vote. So what will happen is we will hold an election where everybody in the town who's a registered voter will have the ability to vote as to whether or not they do want to spend additional money that's above and beyond your tax levy limit, which is Proposition 2 and 1/2. That would, in the scenario you'll see in Article 8, again, I'm sorry that I'm kind of going back and forth, but I think it's important to explain both of them together so we don't have to repeat, is that for a 15-year bond for $4 million, which is the combined total of both of these articles, in the first year of the bond, a $400,000 house would see a $100 per year increase on their tax bill. In year 15, it would go down to about $60 per year to be able to take care of Route 79 and also these additional roads. Should the Route 79 land takings, easements, utility pole movements, and all of the costs associated with Route 79 be less than $2.3 million, we will come back to you at a further town meeting to reappropriate those funds from Article 7 to another article whereby we could use those funds for additional road projects. The road projects overall have been something that we have been looking at from a long-term financial perspective from the town in conjunction with the Finance Committee. We have been talking about this because, as you are well aware, the roads that you drive on every single day are not necessarily in a state that you may like to see them in, but the problem is that we do not have the funds in order to repair them or to actually redo them the way that they should be done for proper engineering purposes.
Thank you. What is the Finance Committee's recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Rodney Dixon, 39 Baker Lane. I'm also the chairman of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And we just held our fourth workshop this weekend, and this very subject came, this is actually the subject matter. The sidewalks, Route 79, was mentioned multiple times, not only at this workshop, but others. So I'd just like to say to the audience members and to the folks at home, this is, we've heard you loud and clear. This is now coming, we would hope, to fruition. But this has been, again, at least the fourth workshop that we've had, and people have mentioned it, and took me aside on Saturday and said, hey, we were doing our, I don't say homework, but we were doing a workshop exercise, and this was identified almost with all of the participants. So we want these to happen. We're going to have to spend money. I know that that's a challenge, and we oftentimes don't want our increase in taxes, but this is what the people want. Let's see what we can do, and if it gets voted on tonight and approved and goes to the ballot, and hopefully that it'll be funded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Blowers, 1 Johnson Drive. I live right on 79. If this project goes through, I will more than likely lose a bit of my property, as I directly abut 79 on Johnson Road. I don't care. The road is horrible. The traffic on it is far more than what that street can handle now, and the increases in traffic will destroy it in a very short amount of time if something is not done soon. I don't particularly believe we need sidewalks, that we'd need bike paths on 79, but you know what? We're not paying for it. The federal government's mandating it. We've got to do it. It just comes with it, and I know I'm going to lose more property due to that. More specifically, my wife will lose more property due to that. She's not as okay with that as I am, but right now, it's kind of useless to us anyways. Sorry, drainage has been going through there. And that's the other thing, the drainage is horrible. We get flooded in every single big rainstorm, snowstorms. The end of our street is just a lake. So now we have people driving across our lawns to avoid the water, and creates even more problems. But I really, really hope that people understand how important it is to not just patch a pothole, but to actually fix the underlying problem on that street, which is it cannot support the traffic that is coming across it. It doesn't have the foundation for it. It doesn't have the drainage for it, and it's an accident waiting to happen. We see them all the time up there, speed being another factor. God bless the police, they do an awesome job of working with that, and the speed will likely increase with people when it's a new road because they fly on it as it is, but hopefully the police can keep that under control. But I fully support this project as it stands. It's not something that would be nice to have happen. It's something that has to happen, and that's for the sake of all of us that live in this town, travel on that road, whether it's just back and forth up and down 79. I mean, the amount of traffic on that street is amazing, and it's not going to get any less. We've got more housing going in, there'll likely be even more coming in with La Baron and some of the other land that's been sold recently. So I, to me, it's a no-brainer. I know that some of these people are really going to have traffic right on their doorstep, and I really feel for those people. But for everybody's benefit, I think we need to approve this and move forward and get it done. Otherwise, it's, it's just going to be horrible, and you're not going to like the results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Noble, Hitching Bowls Road. Question you raised earlier about the vote coming up in November on this, so the question to the board, is it separate? Vote to the town moderator? The question is, is the two articles going to be voted on separately or combined?
Yes, each will be voted on separately. I think Ms. Hollenbeck was trying to explain how the two are tied together so that we don't have to repeat too much, because they're going, both require that they go to a ballot.
Yeah, and I think just, it's not November. It's going to be, so don't, don't get hung up on the date of November being the ballot, but it's actually, we have to call a special election. That will be called if this goes forward tonight. But there'll be two different items that will be on that special election, one for this article and one for the second article if it passes as well.
If this passes, it would go to a ballot by September 15.
Okay. Another question for the moderator. TIPS, I heard the term TIPS. What is TIP?
Ms. Hollenbeck?
So it's a state program. It's the Transportation Improvement Program, so look at the Rotary. That's been on there for a little while, too. So it's things where the state kind of prioritizes where they want to spend their money, and it's authorized at the state level. So this route has been identified at the state level as a project that the state wants and wishes to fund, and so it's coming through the state TIP program, which really is saying, look, you know, the state has done their homework on it. They believe that this is a project, that it's been moving up through the ranks, and now we're ready to have this actually come to fruition.
So are the sidewalks that are included with the 79 project, is that part of the TIPS program?
Ms. Hollenbeck, you may answer.
Yeah, so through the Complete Streets program, and we've, we've gone to Mass. DOT, we've had plenty of conversations with them about, and at first, when the project was presented to us, they actually presented sidewalks on both sides or bike lanes on both sides, and we said, you know, this is kind of really ridiculous because I really don't know where those sidewalks are even going to necessarily. You know, so we had those conversations with them to try to say, how can we make this and how can we modify it so that it actually fits the character of Lakeville itself and what the needs are of the town, and why does it cost so much money, and why is this over-engineered? And the issue is that in order to qualify for the state money, because it's coming from a federally backed source, which is the Complete Streets program, that's why you see at every other intersection a bike lane that appears out of nowhere. That's really all through the state, and the state has created this program whereby, through federal funding, they're trying to make it more transportation-friendly to pedestrians and bikers. So if we tried to do this ourselves, we looked at multiple options. Do we want to do this ourselves? Do we want to just take over the road, you know, rip it up and repave it the way it is? And the cost of doing that wouldn't address the drainage issues. When the state comes in, they will engineer it properly, and they will really take care of all those drainage issues. The unfortunate instance is that we have to deal with some of their engineering that we don't really have a lot of ability to change. We've, we've had those conversations of what we can change. We had a 25% design public hearing that happened maybe two years ago, almost, at this point. And so that was the point where, you know, the biggest question was a roundabout or a signalized intersection. Sorry, and I misspoke when I said there was going to be a roundabout because we fought that. That's not going to be a roundabout. It's actually a signalized intersection at 18 and 79. At least, we hope that that's where it goes with it, but they presented both because they had to present both. So I totally apologize for that because that's not what I want. And I even went to, yeah, so, sorry, I went to DOT, and I even walked in unannounced to try to fight that one. But really, what it is, is that there'll be a signalized intersection at that intersection, and then a redo of the intersection at Precinct and 79. But we will have that final kind of 75% design, and that's when we'll have the next round of public hearings, so everybody can have that conversation.
Okay. One thing I'd like to add further, question to the board, is with the additional Article 8 streets, have you considered adding sidewalks to those streets as part of the design plan? Because if that does qualify for the TIPS, we would, I think that would be appreciative of people who rebutted those streets like I do.
Ms. Hollenbeck?
So through the moderator, so the issue with that is those streets are not part of the TIP program. So the TIP program through the state is only really major routes, major projects that they will...
State roads.
Yeah, state roads as well. So the, when we get to Article 8, we'll talk about the local roads, and we can talk about what the cost is. The cost to actually either redo a sidewalk on an existing street is very expensive, so I'm happy to address that. If you're okay with me waiting till Article 8, I'm happy to address the sidewalk issue on those.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote, and we will count this one. So I would ask my tellers to please... All those in favor, please raise your cards.
14.
14, 23.
24.
24.
28.
28. All those opposed? I don't think we need to do this.
Zero.
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 One.
One.
Two.
It's the kind of math I like. The motion passes. Article 8.
Ms. Moderator, Article 8. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,700,000 for the purpose of reconstructing, resurfacing, and repairing town roads, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. That any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest such, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, as amended, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and execute on behalf of the town any and all documents as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the purposes of this article, provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2, the amounts required to pay the principal of an interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote.
Would you care to speak to it?
I would. So in continuation of a little bit of the explanation from the last article, so if you take a look, we have two scenarios. We have Table 1, a Table 2 that was put together by our town, and what we have here is the funding necessary to pave four roads that we're looking at in Table 1 for $1.7 million approximately, and that would be Freetown Street to County Road, Vaughn Street to Route 105, Pickens Street to Precinct Street, Montgomery Street to Precinct Street. These roads have been identified by our third-party engineer as roads that are in a severe state of repair or in desperate need of repair, whichever you may want to speak to it as. So these particular roads are the ones that have risen to the top of the pile. We have additional roads, which if funds become available through the borrowing, that will be authorized, if it's authorized through a ballot vote, that we will be able to do additional roads, which would include Clear Pond to Route 79, Route 79 to Clear Pond. Those pieces are not state-owned, I should mention that, and then Pierce Avenue to County Road. So those are the items that we're looking at. Again, sidewalks, we haven't really looked at putting sidewalks into these roads because that would take the estimate of the road, in some cases, from, say, Clear Pond to Route 79, $528,000. We'd probably raise it at least another $150,000 to $200,000 to put a sidewalk on there. Roads are very expensive. We do not have a lot of money to be able to repair the roads. So we are asking for your vote and a debt exclusion so that, again, as I explained previously, the maximum amount on a $400,000 home would be $100 a year, going down to $60 per year in year 15 on this debt exclusion vote, which would go to the ballots.
Thank you. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
We recommend approval.
Is there any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article 9.
I move that the town vote to approve the amended agreement among the towns of Acushnet, Carver, Lakeville, Metapoyset, and Rochester with respect to the establishment of a regional vocational technical high school district as proposed by the Old Colony District School Committee. The proposed agreement has been reviewed by the legal counsel of the Old Colony District. The proposed agreement has been reviewed by the legal council of the Old Colony School District as well as the town councils of all member communities.
I'll second.
Would you care to speak to this?
In January of 2018, Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School received a grant to cover the expenses of updating their district agreement with the towns of Acushnet, Carver, Lakeville, Matapoyset, and Rochester. The agreement, the current agreement was established prior to the Education Reform Act of 1993. An update of the agreement was encouraged and supported by the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, and the state auditor, and town meeting must vote to approve the amended agreement. The amended agreement has already been approved by the town meeting in the other four towns.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Is there any discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed. The motion moves unanimously.
I move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaw, Section 8.7, temporary licenses, to change the licensing authority for mobile homes and storage boxes from the Board of Selectmen to the Building Commissioner, and to make the changes shown in Article 10 of the warrant. The Planning Board held hearings on this-
Just one moment, I need a second. I'm sorry.
Someone second.
We got a second? Thank you. Now, you may proceed, sir.
The Planning Board held the required hearings on this and voted unanimously to approve it, to send it to this meeting.
What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
What is the recommendation of the Planning Board?
They recommend-
They recommend it. Would you like to speak more to it?
Sure. This is, there's more to it, but it's actually, there's actually less to it. What it, if somebody, if somebody has an emergency, like if the house burns down or something, what people normally do is they put a trailer on, you know, on wheels, and there's someplace to stand while the, while the existing house is fixed. This way, they just get, they get a permit instead of having to wait for a Board of Selectmen's meeting. The Building Commissioner can on the spot approve that. Likewise, he can on the spot approve for a year an unoccupied, an unoccupied one. It's not, there aren't going to be, if you only read the paragraph that I read, it sounds like we might have mobile homes and storage boxes approved. They're not. We don't have, there won't be anything like that. The storage boxes are, they're approved for only a year at a time. So, everything's the same except instead of going to the Board of Selectmen with that request that has been, you know, on the books for years, now you go to the Building Commissioner.
Is there any further discussion? This requires a 2/3 vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed. The motion moves unanimously. Article 11.
Article 11. I move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaw, Section 6.7, site plan review, subsection 6.7.3, procedure residential, as shown on Article 11 of the warrant.
I need a second.
Second.
Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I would. What we've had on the books for some years now, probably, probably a bit, well, over 10 years anyway, is that site plan review for residences that disturbs more than 3,000 square feet of ground had a, well, there was a procedure that you had to go through. Well, if we had used that, if we had done, if we had used 3,000 square feet of land, we would have been doing site plan review for just about every house. There wasn't a Form C subdivision, which wasn't, which was a tremendous amount of work, and it was work that no one really wanted anyone to do either. But this grew out of having the, the drainage, the state's drainage bylaws, where they wanted us to do something. But so, what they were, what the state actually originally had was an acre if you disturbed more than an acre of land, which isn't like you, you know, it's not like if you buy an acre of land, it's if you disturb, you know, an acre of land, you have to get a site plan review. And most of that, we haven't been doing them, but most of that we'll have to do with how you get your driveway on a Form A out onto the street, and what happens to the water. We've, the issue we have is, it's going to be a culvert bylaw, but right now, it's 3,000. It's just, it's absolutely unworkable. We're going to reduce, we're going to increase the square feet to something more reasonable that actually, you know, can be looked at. The Building Commissioner will tell you when you get a building permit whether it's, whether it exceeds that, the 43,560.
Thank you.
We held a hearing, and we recommend approval.
And what is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Is there any other discussion? This requires a 2/3 vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may put them down. All those opposed. The motion moves unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, there were two people. I didn't see that. Two opposed. I managed to another count. I'm sorry, the moderator is in doubt. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Opposed? I see them now, okay. Do you see them? I have to count, I have to do a count. My tellers, would you please count? All those in favor, please raise your cards one more time. My apologies.
Fifteen.
All those, all those opposed?
One.
Thank you.
Zero.
The motion moves by majority, by 2/3 vote. Article 12.
Madam Moderator, I wish to postpone this matter indefinitely. It's not ready to go.
Second.
All those, discussion? All those in favor of postponing this indefinitely, which essentially kills it? Please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed?
This isn't meant to be opposed, you know, indefinitely postponed. This is meant to be postponed-
It must be according to procedure. It can be brought back at another point, put back on the warrant by the Selectmen, but it, we can't carry it to another time because we must dissolve the meeting at the end of this meeting. It doesn't mean it won't ever happen again. Okay. Okay, so I believe that that was a vote that was majority vote. Thank you. I think that's it. So, I need to have a, we're at the end of our business. I need to hear a motion to dissolve the meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Opposed?
Thank you, everyone.